Kathy, take your role.
Chair Adams.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Oliver's.
Here.
Commissioner Solson.
Yes.
Commissioner Sand.
Here.
Commissioner Jordison.
Here.
Commissioner Tisdale.
Here.
Kathy's done a great job of putting together meeting minutes from our October 7th, 2014 meetings. Has everyone had a chance to review those? Any comments or revisions? All right, hearing none.
One spot.
Claire, do you want to turn your microphone?
Sorry. I have one spot on page nine, and I refer this to Lauren. At 7:56, 50 PM, it says Commissioner Sand stated that it appeared to him that the deleted language in number nine was unnecessary. I think it was considered necessary because we kept it in.
Correct.
Oh, yeah.
All right, okay.
Good note, thank you. Any other comments or revisions? All right, hearing none. Along with that revision, do I have a motion to approve the October 7th, 2014?
Move the approval of the minutes, last meeting.
Second.
Great. Kathy?
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordison?
Yes.
Commissioner Sand?
Yes.
Commissioner Solson?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliver's?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
I'll be abstaining since I wasn't in attendance.
Chair Adams?
Yes. All right, Commissioner Tisdale, we're going to start with you if you have any Commissioner reports for us.
None other than last.
Might hit your microphone for us?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Last week, I participated in a leadership, regional leadership conference in Sun Cadia where the electeds and the business community and the education community came together for King Pierce and Snohomish County. And Price Waterhouse did a climate change presentation. And it was, it was really interesting, and I'm trying to obtain a copy of it, and I'll share it with you, but it was, it was, it was not about the science and that part of it. It was, it was, it was really about the amount of people that are being born and can continue to be born, and then the need, the water, air, and those things that they need. And it was, I think the crowd was taken back by it because there's some things in 25 and 35 where water disappears and things disappear. And I, it wasn't funny. I'm sorry, it was a nervous laugh. But I thought it, Paul was there, and he saw it, and I, anyway.
Great.
My report.
Thank you.
I'm just going to take a moment and embarrass our Chair for his diligent efforts and his Herculean undertaking of the Streets Initiative. And I've been watching him on TV. And I'm very proud to say that, that I have made your acquaintance, and you are humanitarian, and a gentleman, and a truly civic-minded individual. So I just want to say, my hat's off to you. Good job, Chris.
Thank you.
Way to go.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Wish you the same. No other report?
No other report.
Haven't any report?
I have just a couple of things to report in terms of attendance at some fun civic activities. One was the 20th anniversary of the Monte Cristo Awards Ceremony, and Commissioner Tisdale was also there. And that was a couple weeks ago. And it was very well-attended, and they had all the, as many prior recipients as they could fit in the Performing Arts Center. So lots of people were there to be recognized for their, taking care of their yards as well as their, their homes. And I really appreciate that we do that type of celebration for folks. And then, just this last Saturday is the, was the annual tree planting. And this year, it was at Thornton A. Sullivan Park by Silver Lake. And there were about 50 of us there, and it's part of the Green Everett Day activities. And we planted, I think they said about 700 different shrubs and trees, and different things in the wooded area by Camp Patterson. So that was a fun activity, and I'd encourage evidently they're going to do this every year. So I'd encourage others to join me. Next time, we'll try to get an earlier announcement out to everybody.
That's great. Thank you. Just have a short report, and I appreciate the comments. Thank you very much. And it is with regard to the Streets Initiative. We have two meetings left, and we've been voting on recommendations to make back to the city and the community with regard to what we've been working on. And in the next two meetings, we'll be trying to narrow our report, prioritize recommendations, and actually probably at the next meeting, like to get a draft of the report that we're working on, probably just passed out to all of you so you can see it. So that way you can provide any comments back to the Streets Initiative based on what you see. And if you hadn't had a chance, all the, all the work that we're doing is available on the YouTube, which, on YouTube, which, they're long meetings. It's 27 hours total that we're putting into this. But if you do get a chance to go look at it, some of the presentations are really compelling. And it's been one of the fun things about the process, is watching the business community, the service providers, the city staff, the county staff, all look at things from a different perspective, and change position to a large degree. I mean, where we thought one thing might have been the cause of an issue before, now you're looking at it from a whole new perspective. So if you do get a chance to go look at them, please do. So, thank you. Dave, any comments?
Yeah, just about future meetings. We had emailed you a schedule to the end of the year, and so we plan on having meetings on the first and third Tuesdays in November and December. The Port of Everett Project, November 4th and December 2nd. And then Comprehensive Plan items on November 18th and December 16th. On the 18th, we'll have some information. There's a background report that's been done by the Alliance for Housing Affordability, which is a group of cities that have come together along with the county to look at housing issues. And that group is producing background reports for all the cities in the county related for the housing element. And it's staffed by the Snohomish County Housing Authority as a staff person that is working with us on that. So we'll have that briefing for you on the 18th, along with some other Comprehensive Plan items. And then on December 16th, we will too. So we're starting to bring forward items for you to look at and start building your information related to the Comprehensive Plan. That's all I have tonight.
Perfect. Thank you. And also actually going back to, you've attended almost all of our meetings at the Streets Initiative also, so.
I've been at all of them.
You've been presented to us, so.
Well, I've provided some background information to the group, and then I made the one presentation on plans. But, yeah, one observation is that some of the business community, they've, I think what's offline has not shown there is some of the tours that they've done, including going to the Gospel Mission and such. And I think the scale of the Gospel Mission and their assistance, there's one property owner who has a better feel for it, and realizing that there's 150-plus people a night sleeping in the Gospel Mission, and he sees a half dozen kind of problems in the neighborhood. He realizes that actually the Gospel Mission staff's doing a pretty good job with the numbers that are there. And so I think it's, and then the opportunity to go and talk to some people and such. So there's been also things that have happened that aren't at the committee meetings, where people have been able to go out and, and visit and get some more information. So downtown business community giving tours downtown and what their issues are, the service providers and such. So I think it's been a good education process.
Well, thank you for attending those. I appreciate it. So as we've done recently, we also have an opportunity for any citizen comments at this point, if it's unrelated to the one agenda item that we have. Any citizen comments? All right. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to our one agenda item. So it's a workshop on climate change and the Comprehensive Plan update. Mary, I think I'm turning this over to you, correct?
Yes. Lucky you. Lucky me. Okay, so I, we prepared a background report on climate change that you've all been provided, and basically the purpose of tonight's meeting is to go over that. The information was compiled to use in developing the goals and policies and the Comprehensive Plan climate change element. And so the report, we tried to look at some of the science behind it, what the city and others have done in the area related to climate change, and then relevant regional policies that we need to show that we're meeting in the update. So there's, I think there's four, four reports, five reports that we, I tried to generally describe in there and not provide too much detail. We provided the links to all the documents. So if you have, you know, real, more detailed questions about a lot of the science, it's available in those documents. But the, the first one was the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, 2013 document, and the portion that I, taking this is from the summary for policymakers. There's a much larger document behind that. And basically, they state that warming of the climate system is unequivocable. Humans are definitely having an influence on that. And continued emissions of greenhouse gases is going to cause further warming and changes in the climate system. And just for, to make sure we're all on the same page, greenhouse gases are gases that trap heat in the atmosphere, and they include carbon dioxide, methane, nitrous oxide, ozone, and even water vapor. And this report also said that even if we stop emitting greenhouse gases right now, that the impacts of climate change are going to continue for many centuries in the future. Also looked at the Third National Climate Assessment, and focused on, they had a chapter on different regions of the US. So this is then information from the Northwest Chapter. And they are projecting an increase in average annual temperatures of 3.3 to 9.7 degrees Fahrenheit by 27 to 2099, which can have significant impacts. And here's an example that was on the cover of the report from a 2009 report from the UW Climate Impacts Group that showed the effects on salmon survivability based on stream temperatures. So on the left-hand side is the historical, the solid colors are the air temperatures, average August air temperatures. And then the dots are temperatures at monitoring stations, water monitoring stations. And then on the right shows the substantial changes that are going to be occurring even by 2040 based on their medium model. A lot of these analyses are based on, you know, a worst case, a medium, and the best-case scenarios, and, you know, up to 10 different scenarios. And they'll give you ranges of impacts that are within those scenarios. So this is based on the medium impacts. And it shows that in eastern Washington especially, that some of the stream temperatures are going to be, to the extent that they're fatal for salmon in August. This is a chart just showing based on the warming, that there's going to be a huge demand, increase in demand for cooling and energy in the summer months. So this is over an average over Washington State, and of course it'll be a lot higher in eastern Washington than it will here. But the white air bar is the increase that's based on population growth alone. The blue bar is warming alone with the medium scenario. And then the red bar is the increased demand based on warming in combination with population growth. So the increased temperatures are going to result in a demand for more energy uses, which could further impact green, exacerbate the energy emissions that we're currently producing. That Northwest Chapter also projected annual average precipitation, ranges within certain timeframes. And there's a big variability in that from minus 11% to plus 12 by 2060, and minus 10% to plus 18 by 2099. And again, those are based on the different scenarios, and also the region of Washington that you're in. And, but all the models agreed that summer precipitation would decrease up to 30% with an average projection of 10% by the end of the century. Here's a couple of charts from that assessment. And they are predicting increased winter stream flows, earlier snowmelt, and reduced summer flows in the streams. The, the chart on the left shows the increasing stream flows in the winter over time, reduction, and then the reductions in the summer flows. The impacts are going to vary by stream type and stream location. So this is just one stream that this is for, and all the streams may be different. But, and whether the streams are fed by snowmelt can affect that. The types of groundwater features that are in the basins and stuff will all have an effect. So these, a graph like this would be different for different stream types. And then the chart on the right shows the change in 2040 summer, July to September stream flow by percent. And, you know, don't want to get into details just to, except just to show that it really varies, those percentage changes really vary by region, whether you're in the west of the Cascades, east of the Cascades. And it's, can be fairly site-specific. So some of the conclusions of that assessment were that there's going to be increase in extreme daily precipitation, which we have been seeing in the region lately, where our north-end sewers are flooding. There's going to be trade-offs and objectives for reservoirs. Now, there's going to be electric power versus water for irrigation, and human use when, during the summers when it's hotter and there's less stream flows. There'll be increasing wildfires, insect outbreaks, tree diseases, and ecosystem changes. As shown in the earlier slide with this, related to the salmon temperatures, there is going to be freshwater species are going to be threatened. And they have documented the number of increasing deaths due to heat that they're predicting. Even in Seattle, I forget the exact number, I think it's in the background report, but it's primarily due to heat spells affecting the elderly and people with other types of diseases. But it will have a significant impact. We also looked at a report on sea level rise for the coast of California, Oregon, and Washington. And one thing that, probably the most interesting thing about this report is that it documents because of the way, different ways that Earth is moving based on plate tectonics and the, that, and the glaciers, how they affect this area versus other areas, glacier melt and sea level rise, that it's, sea level rise is not going to be as severe in our areas as it is globally. So it'll have much less impact here, but it, it could still be significant for impacts on infrastructure and beaches, public recreational areas, stuff like that. So that report, so this chart shows the projections and the ranges by 2030, 2050, and 2100. The top chart is in inches. And that, it kind of shows that as you go further out, there's a lot less known, and the range is wider because there's a lot more unpredictability in that. The 2014 Risky Business Report that was also addressed here, and then discussed by Councilman Roberts when he presented to the Commission, had slightly different ranges of sea level rise that they were predicting. But they were close in the, for the 2100, going up about one and a half, you know, to three feet, which is similar to the 2012 report, which said a little over a foot to three feet. But they also, the Risky Business Report also stated very clearly that there's a 1 in 100 chance of more than a 5.9-foot rise by 2100. So there, there is a lot of unknowns and uncertainty out there. And then the incidence of extreme high sea level is going to become higher, or it's going to become increasingly more common, and it's going to be impacted by El Niños, El Niños, I think that's what it is, that may become more common. And then the biggest risk that we have here is the potential for a large great Cascadian earthquake that could cause, you know, at least a three-meter subs, instantaneous subsidence, which has occurred in the past, in the regions that they've been able to document by the sudden drop in forest and other landforms that are, you know, came underwater and killed at one point in time. So, so that type of drop would be in addition to what would be forecast by sea level rise. We also tried to take a look at using some of the online models to kind of forecast what that would mean for Everett, some of the different types of sea level rises. One of them we looked at is the Climate Central Surging Seas Model. And they have quite a bit of information, you know, a specific Everett forecast that you can go in and you can look at. They have these analyses to say with a certain sea level rise, this much property value has impacted this population, this number of people, are they low-income people or not. Everett didn't have as many people affected because most of our areas that will be affected are more industrial-type areas. But one thing about this model that wasn't very helpful is they show the levees that are in red on the screen, and they said, "Well, we don't have any information about the levees, so we're going to assume that they're all strong enough and tall enough to keep out sea level rise, even up to six feet high," which we know is not the case. And so this, this model was not very effective. It did, you know, it could be used to look at areas like, you know, Jettie Island or areas along the bay to some extent. But it's still, it's not real detail-oriented. It doesn't talk, and it shows some things that I'm not sure are really true. Like up, kind of in northeast Everett, there's Burlington Northern Delta Yard up there. And I know they, that shows that area being partially inundated in a two-foot sea level rise. And I think even a one-foot sea level rise. But I know they've done a lot of work up there. They got, they didn't have to get permits from us, but they got permits from the state and federal government to do some wetland fills and stuff up in there. So I know they increased elevation. They still have some wetlands, but I don't know how that, if this would be accurate for them. So it's interesting to look at, but it wasn't real helpful in some of the areas that are going to be most impacted. We also looked at another, another model, the NOAA Coastal Viewer. And I've got some, you know, examples of current one-foot rise, two-foot rise, and three-foot rise. But the areas in green on this model, they're saying are low-lying areas. Not inundated now, but maybe could be impacted by flooding. Some of those areas are wrong. For example, the, this area over on the east side of the waste, of the wastewater treatment plant lagoons has already been breached. That was a wetland mitigation project, so it's already tidally inundated. And then Mallsby Marsh up here is already tidally inundated. Doesn't have a huge connection, but there is a connection to the bay, and water goes in and out, definitely during tidal events. But the other thing about this model that was difficult is they didn't show any levees in Everett on this one. There's a bar that comes up that says it's supposed to show levees, but none came up for Everett. And, you know, just having some discussions with staff, we think that our, like, dikes around the wastewater treatment plant or Water Pollution Control Facility, it's called now, and on Smith Island could, may be able to withstand maybe a two-foot sea level rise in terms of height, but we're not sure about the strength or anything like that. So we can get into, this, this exercise we're doing now as part of this update is not going to be able to accurately map what's going to happen with sea level rise. So I think we'll end up having policies in here saying that we need to do that. But we need more information to do that. And planning staff, especially in the short period of time that we have, isn't, doesn't have the qualifications at this point to do that. So, and there's a need to look at a lot of the connections with tide gates and what's keeping water in and out. And, you know, if a area is flooded, is the water going to be able to get back out, that type of thing, and where the culvert connections are that get the water into different areas. So, so this, this model, you know, does show those low-lying areas being inundated, all of E.B. Island with a one-foot sea level rise. And then pretty much most of Smith Island, Spencer Island with a one-foot sea level rise. And Jettie Island is pretty impacted by the two- and three-foot rises also. We also looked at a document on ocean acidification that was developed by Governor's Blue Ribbon Panel on Ocean Acidification. And their conclusions or findings were that the acidity of the surface of ocean is expected to increase by 100 to 150% by 2100. And then the, the other area I found really interesting that, you know, off the coast of Washington, the acidity is really, what's causing that to go up really high is there's a lot of ocean upwelling of nutrients with carbon and stuff. And so that's having a huge impact on the acidity off the Washington, Oregon coast. But inland in Puget Sound, the biggest cause of acidity is the freshwater streams flowing into Puget Sound. They've got a lower pH than the regular seawater. And they're bringing in a lot of fertilizers and other, you know, man-made nutrients that put off carbon when they decompose. And so those excess nutrients and stuff that are caused by human activity, or, you know, in some cases just natural processes, are increasing the acidity of the waters. And it has started causing problems locally even in Puget Sound, where, for example, you know, Taylor Shellfish has had problems getting their shellfish to, you know, produce larvae in, in natural conditions. So it is having a huge effect. And because of the ocean upwelling on the coast, they're saying this is one, the one area of the country that, that acidification is having the biggest impacts. And what's, what's happening here is going to be seen by other people later, but it's much worse here than other places. So ocean acidity affects a broad range of organisms' responses. And there's not a ton known about what all the effects will be on different types of creatures, but it clearly affects. creatures, but it clearly affects, you know, the shells of shellfish, wears those away and and it can have effects on behavior, reproduction and and growth rates, et cetera. So it has this increased acidity has the potential to affect a wide variety of organisms and in a lot of different ways. And then the some of the conclusions of the Risky Business Report regarding the economic risks of climate change in the U.S. are that we do, you know, many regions of the U.S. face serious economic effects from climate change if we continue the way we we have been in our emissions. The northwest economy is very dependent on our coast and our forest. And climate change is a significant threat to those economic interests and that if we act today, we could still avoid many of the worst impacts. So those are kind of the big reports I chose to summarize. And if, you know, we'll be taking comments if other people have reports I missed and other information that should be considered, we'll take a look at that. But from there, we wanted to just see, well, what has Everett been doing in the past? In two thousand and six, Mayor Stephenson signed the Mayor's Climate Protection Initiative, which stated stated that signees would strive to meet the Kyoto targets for emission reductions. Part of the issue with that is that we don't have an inventory of local emissions from that time to kind of check against or to see what kind of reductions we had. The that initiative also signers agreed to take action at the local, state and federal, you know, levels to politically support reductions in emissions. And then in two thousand and seven, city council adopted a sustainable building and infrastructure policy. And that said that staff should use the lead criteria for to the maximum extent possible in the design and construction of city capital improvement projects. And it also directed staff to encourage the use of lead and private development, including like through land use regulations, building codes, development standards. And we have since then had one city building, the municipal court has been billed to lead silver standards based on that policy. In two thousand and eleven, the city adopted a climate action plan for municipal operations or they published it. It was funded by a department from a grant from the U.S. Energy Department. And it was prepared by ICLI, which is a group, Local Governments for Sustainability, that has developed models for how you measure greenhouse gases. There was an earlier model done by an intern for admin, I think probably about five years prior to this time. I don't know the exact date. And so this updated that greenhouse gas inventory using an updated model. And then the plan also identifies programs and policies to reduce emissions. And if all of those were implemented, it would decrease emissions by forty percent in twenty thirty. It also a lot of the information in the report and the background report that talks about the emission reductions that the city has achieved so far came from this report. So I'm trying to think of an example, but I can't remember any numbers. But there are there's quite a few examples of how much, you know, emissions were reduced by, say, fire department implementing a commute trip reduction program, that type of thing. The the plan does not set goals. It doesn't say, you know, how many of those, you know, emission re- those programs they're going to implement. And a lot of it, my understanding is based on funding is not currently available and trying to figure out, you know, a lot of it will be grant-based, applying for grants to try and achieve some of those projects. The plan really just addresses city operations. It doesn't address emissions from the community at large. And city emissions are usually about two to ten percent of the whole community's emissions. So we don't really have any documentation at this point on what what the city community is emitting in terms of greenhouse gases. In two thousand and eleven, twenty twelve, the city's Department of Emergency Management in conjunction with the UW Hazards Mitigation Planning and Research Program updated the city's hazard mitigation plan. They started with a vulnerability assessment that looked at what are all the threats to the community. And as part of this update, they added two new threats that had not been in their previous plan. One was pandemics and one, the second one, was climate change. And those ended up being ranked. They also addressed in here all the threats that in the previous plans that were going to be exacerbated by climate change. So the ones listed on the screen, severe storms, pandemics, climate change, fire and flooding, were ranked number two through five out of the ten hazards facing the city. Earthquakes was number one. But all of those others are can be impacted or made worse by climate change. And the plan identifies a wide variety of impacts to the community based on climate change, on property, infrastructure, public health, the economy. And they provide a lot of strategies in there to increase hazard resilience, everything from, you know, protecting the city's water supply lines, having backups, having sufficient sand out on the streets for severe weather, public education to get people to be able to respond in emergencies. So there's quite a few activities in there that and some of those will incorporate into our climate plan element also. The city's Public Works Department, as they've been updating their sewer water and surface water plans, have been including projections of climate change in those. Starting in two thousand and seven, the city's water plan used forecast from the University of Washington Climate Impacts Group. The Climate Impacts Group developed three scenarios based on, I think, ten original scenarios that were based on the national panel reports. And they an average optimistic and pessimistic forecast and they use those in their modeling. And their city's currently in the process of updating that plan and they're using those same that same information in the update. Basically, it shows because of the increase, there's going to be more water in the Salton River during the winter months, but it's not going to be available in the summer months because of lower river flows when it's needed. But so it reduces probably by about ten percent the amount of water that could be taken out of the river by twenty one hundred. But they're still projecting that they there is sufficient capacity to serve the public's needs in twenty one hundred. And I think that's partially mainly because of Kimberly Clark leaving because when I looked at the two thousand and seven report under some of the scenarios, there wasn't sufficient water. So and then the sewer and water, surface water plants are modeling or when they're projecting the amount of pipes or what's going to be in the stream, stream impacts from erosion and all that stuff. They've adjusted upward by nine percent rainfall volumes during the winter months, thirteen point five percent increase in spring and fall, and eighteen percent during the summer months. So they're all definitely taking account of future climate change impacts in their And then there's the Growth Management Act and the City's Comp Plan. And one of the things I've been reading is that land use and transportation have a huge impact on greenhouse gas emissions. And one of the best ways for a community to reduce their greenhouse gas emissions is to increase density. But you need to do it where you have mixed-use communities that have a variety of services in the area, that have recreation features nearby and that are are walkable, bikeable, and have transit available to them. So they need to be places where people can do trips without, you know, maybe multiple task errands without getting in their car and to not have to get in the car to go to the park to walk the dog or whatever. So we've in the past, you know, we have these plans that where we have tried to plan for higher densities and and create more walkable, we have design standards and to create these higher densities in areas where transit is available. And we've also been looking at pedestrian, have standards for pedestrian accessibility and bicycling, bicycling accessibility. Good example is the new bike lanes on Hoyt Avenue that were built as part of the downtown plan. And then the transportation element has a huge emphasis on mode of travel targets and trying to get people out of their single occupant vehicles. So there's goals to increase people using bikes, walking and transit. And then the capital facilities and utilities element has goals for conservation of utility resources and the energy needed to get those resources to people. The report also talks about a lot of the city facilities and operations. The Department of Energy and Department of Commerce grants financed a lot of energy efficiency projects throughout the city on city buildings, city parks, streetlights, all all those kind of things. And then the city has funded quite a few other energy efficiency retrofits out of the department budgets, and those are set out in the report. A fun one is that the PUD partnered with the city to put in solar panels at the senior center that are visible on the south side of the senior center. And those are used to for their Wii stations. And there it's a public educational outreach program and they have a monitor there so you can go see at any point in time how much energy these have produced and saved from the standard system. And then our motor vehicles department has been trying to replace vehicles when feasible with hybrids or other, you know, low mileage vehicles or using different fuels. They're put into operation programs in parks and public works on idle reducing idling. So there's a lot of things like that going on in the background. And then we have tree programs throughout the city. Trees are another thing that's mentioned in all the literature on helping to mitigate for the impacts of climate change. Trees store a lot of carbon in their wood. And they also have a huge impact on reducing temperatures and energy usage related to They there's there's a lot of threats to the current tree program, trees from climate change, and it could affect the viability of certain species. It's the biggest impact is up in the higher elevations in the mountains where some of the some alpine forests are supposed to disappear over time. But it will have an impact in on the health of trees in the lower elevations also. And the city has had a street street tree program since the nineteen nineties, and their current policy is to replace every time a tree's removed, they replace it with two trees. So they are actively increasing the number of trees around town. They do work with neighborhoods and try and do large neighborhood plantings. And then in the past year or so, the city developed the Green Everett Partnership with Forterra. And I think that's part of what Karen was talking about for her, what happened at Thornton-Sullivan Park last weekend, the planting program. The intent of this is to use, you know, stewardship, volunteers to go in and replant a lot of the remove invases and then replant a lot of native species to restore some of the forested parklands in Everett. And then, you know, significant emissions can be avoided by recycling, waste reduction and composting. And the city's had a programs in the Public Works Department since nineteen eighty-eight related to these through the solid waste planning efforts. And those are all detailed in the report, but there there's a lot related to public education and outreach, working with businesses, working with school districts. They set up recycling programs in all the school Everett School District properties. They've worked significantly with businesses and develop brochures for businesses. They work at public events to get people to control waste. And they've had quite a program financed both by the city's solid waste utility and they've been getting grants through the Department of Ecology for that work. Currently, at one time, we had our own city solid waste plans, but now we're under the county's solid waste plans. And I have to thank Claire for helping me track down some of this information. Just kind of disappeared. But the first goal of the county's current plan is to reduce climate change and promote sustainability. And they only have two goals in their plan. That's the first and primary one. And a lot of their plan is related to recycling, waste reduction and composting and how to get do things that will reduce greenhouse gas emissions. We tried to present in this plan a quite a grouping of what other people in the community are doing. I had to limit it to some extent, so picked some of the main groups in the area. PUD has done a lot regarding energy efficiency and use of renewable energy. So we and the city has partnered with them on certain actions on through our Department of Energy grants, for example, of doing energy retrofits and multifamily projects along Casino Road. And so I felt it was important to put them in there. There's also some discussion about Snohomish County's, I can't remember the name of their department, but they have a climate change sustainability department now or office. And again, they have the solid waste programs. The Snohomish Basin Salmon Recovery Forum is updating their salmon conservation plan, developing a new, oh, it's now going to be called a protection plan, Salmon Basin Basin Protection Plan. Karen just provided information from that last week, which I've incorporated a little bit, but there's more to come on that. We got appendices also that I haven't been able to look at yet. So we'll, I may be updating that information. We sent this out to different folks to review, so we may be getting comments back from the Port of Everett and stuff, so we'll be incorporating their comments. One thing I did want to comment on was the PUD. I provided a handout to you that revised their information. And we turns out we got a letter from them in September, which I didn't see until Friday. But they specifically requet, you know, said in their letter that they are having a hard time getting multifamily projects to provide higher getting multifamily projects to provide higher energy efficiency. And it, and the reason for that is because the owners, the builders, are not the people paying the energy bills. It's the renters who come later that are paying those bills. And so they're having a hard time getting the owners of the buildings to do these energy efficiency projects. So they, in their September letter, they specifically requested that the city work with them to try and provide incentives for these multifamily projects to increase energy efficiency. So that's something that we'll be looking at in this update and providing policies on that and maybe thinking of options and ways that we could do that. So the climate change element, you haven't seen that yet. Nobody has. And it's going to be based on this background report information. So if there is other information that you know of that needs, that we're not thinking of, that we need to include, you know, those are some of the comments we'd like to see. The policies are, have to be consistent with Vision 2040 and the county-wide planning policies, and those are included in the background report. We are not going to be able to update or develop a climate action plan in the timeframe of this comprehensive plan for either updating the cities just for plan for municipal operations or for community-wide plans. So the current proposal is to have policies in here that say these plans should be prepared, and they should include these things. And that's kind of where we're headed. And one thing I'm struggling with is there's a lot of overlap between climate change and all the other elements in the comp plan. They all address climate change to some effect, to some extent. And I'm trying to figure out, I need to make sure that all the policies are consistent or that they, they go together well. And, you know, the examples that we have are, you know, land use and transportation both directly impact climate change. And so a lot of the climate change recommendations are based on those, but we already have policies in the other elements. And then urban design and parks are, you know, two other elements of the comp plan. And they're both very important in making sure those land use and transportation elements work and that we get the livable, high-density communities that make people want to live here. So I'm trying not to repeat too many things, but, so I haven't, it's not totally figured out yet. We're, it's still a work in progress. And, you know, of course, capital facilities and utilities, they're impacted by climate change, and they have some policies and even economic development. So that's kind of, we're still working on it. What we're hoping to do is, in the next couple weeks, revise the background report based on the comments received. I've asked people from the other agencies to give me comments by the end of the month, if possible. And then we'll be drafting the climate change element and routing it for in-house review. And hopefully, we will be back to you by November 18 with a draft element for your review. That's our goal. And part of that will depend on making, getting comments from all the other departments in a reasonable timeframe. So. That is all I have. So if you have questions or comments, any recommendations, things we're missing.
You know, I was looking through the material, and I was, I see where, I see a lot of little sort of, sort of minor things that add them all together, and they become great. If everybody could just change their life a little bit, you know, it would always, it would help to add to that sort of accumulated effort that I keep sort of looking at. And when, when Paul Roberts was in front of us the last time, I asked him, what, what are we doing to incentivize the private sector to really go after some sustainable type of designs and low-impact developments? And he did give me an answer, but I was, you know, I, I guess I'm still looking for that big sort of, that big plum that we're going to put out there that says, okay, if you do this, you know, we're going to give you that, you know? In other words, like if you do a really super energy-efficient development that conserves water and is sensitive to the natural environment and respects all the, all the little microenvironments around it, what are we going to do for them? Why should they do that? What, what is their incentive to do that? So, and I see a lot of these things for the PUD and, you know, little programs that they have to get people to use more energy-efficient, you know, light bulbs and, you know, save water and their low-flow showers and toilets and whatnot. But I, I see also, you know, PUD, the PUDs and the PSCs and the Seattle City Lights and the Tacoma Power, and, you know, they're, they're all still part of that great sort of infrastructure of energy. And I got to say, probably the longest-standing legal monopoly that they have in this nation as far as, you know, the energy business. And, you know, I, I know a lot of these little things can sort of add to that sort of overall savings of, of energy consumption in our nation. But we're still in that sort of like, that centralized infrastructure of, of energy consumption, you know? And it's this infrastructure that, you know, the Bonneville powers of, of our country use freely, but they don't really want to invest in, you know, upgrading it. And then when things start falling apart, they start asking for the government to come in and pay for it, you know? So I'm kind of, you know, I'm kind of being a little bit sort of a agitator in a sense. But, you know, what, what is the really big thing? I see a lot of little things that sort of, where we're sort of keeping up to par with a lot of other jurisdictions, but I'm not seeing any great, very, sort of a grandiose gesture. Even if it was just a gesture, I would like to see something that was sort of a, that sort of, where the city of Everett could stand out. We could be the standout. We could be the leader. We could, you know, make a statement that, yes, we're really devoted to this. So that's a little bit of a, maybe the over-the-top sort of comment that I have. Thank you.
Other comments, or comments in this point, questions?
Mary, the, you talked about the rental housing or the apartments or that and that. But it's my understanding that one of the biggest gains is in the pre-1980 homes that are out there. You know, you take, you've addressed the new projects that are being built. But it's, it's my understanding our biggest gain in power consumption, whether it's gas or, or electricity, could be by retrofitting those pre-1980 homes. And I'm, I didn't see anything in there about, about that.
I'll try and find out about that.
The governor's office in Gregoire's term had a bunch of money allocated to do retrofit, energy packages, windows, insulation, blah, blah, blah. And so you, you might be able to get it from, you know, that era of time. Building Code Council might have it also.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments? We have one speaker signed up to speak. And so we can always come back, more questions or comments. All right.